To order, it is 7:00 PM. And we do have a quorum. Councilmember Kurtz is not here tonight. As some of you may know, part of our discussion tonight, he has a conflict with and cannot participate in the discussion or vote. So he chose to not even be here to not show any conflict. For those of you who are standing, we have opened our training room, which is over to my left, out the door, turn left. Plenty of seats over there. There are televisions there. You should be able to see the video of what's happening here and have the audio. If you stay in the room, please don't block the exits. In just a moment, I'll ask you to stand. We're going to be led with an opening prayer this evening by Senior Pastor of the United Methodist Church, Edlyn Cowley. Following, if you'll continue to stand, and we'll be led in our pledges by Mayor Protem Schaffner, first to the American flag and second to the Texas flag. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. This day we've never seen before, this day that was not promised to us. God, we come tonight asking for your presence, for our leaders, for our mayor. And God, I pray that as your spirit is with us tonight, that you will guide this conversation so that our town will continue to move forward, to be a place where we all come together, to seek to live in a way that is pleasing in your sight. Be with us tonight. This is our prayer, and we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. May be seated. Just ask staff, if you see people continue to come in the room, that you might at least let them know there is an overflow area if they want to do it as opposed to stand, because I'm not going to announce it again. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this time, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So we do have several people that have signed up to speak. If you're wanting to speak during citizens' presentations, the forms are available in the back of the room, in both sides. You can complete those and bring them up to Holly, who is our town secretary up on my left. In addition, if you came to speak in reference to item 7A, which was listed on our agenda to be in executive session, we are going to do that in public, assuming council agrees to make that public, and we'll take that action later. So if you had citizen presentations that you wanted to deal with that subject, you may do so, but I'm just letting you know we'll deal with the topic specifically later in open session. So the first person who signed up was Luann Oldham. And Luann, do you want to make it at this time or later?
At 7:00.
Okay. And J.J. Asherwood.
I'll make it now.
Okay. Come forward, state your name and address, and then you will have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is J.J. Asherwood and live at 2 Greenbrook Court. I usually don't write prepared statements to read, but tonight wanted to make sure I got my words correct. I'm a combat veteran who retired after 20 years of military service in 2006 with my wife and I deciding to make Trophy Club our home with our then-one, new one-year-old son. We chose this place because it is a wonderful neighborhood, great neighbors, close community, and was a friendly and safe place to live. Since then, we have enjoyed living here. Several years ago, I had the opportunity to serve in our newly-created CCPD board, and it has been my honor to serve there since. It has been my absolute privilege to serve alongside some exceptionally qualified individuals, some of whom have extensive law enforcement background, doing some pretty awesome stuff. Patrick Arata and Tom Klass are two such individuals. Our town is fortunate to have them and should be extremely grateful they put their hands up for public service. I'd categorize the special agent in charge of the FBI Dallas Field Office and Assistant Chief of the DEA Aviation Operations as pretty awesome qualifications to have their hand in our town's law enforcement and our town operations. I have had the privilege of working with both individuals and can say they have my complete trust and confidence. Trust can be a hard thing to come by these days, and a person whom you can trust is worth his or her weight in gold. Tom and Patrick are such individuals. Their diligent efforts have made my job easy on the board, and both have served as faithful stewards of our town. If you look around here, you're going to see the finest police force in our nation and perhaps the planet, having seen a great deal on a day-to-day basis. Second to none. The quality of our officers, their competence, their equipment, and their training has been a direct result of Patrick's hard work and leadership in our community. Our response time, proactive policing, community involvement, service to the residents, tactical capabilities, investigative resources and skills, everything, have been the result of leadership and groundwork that you see before you. When I get a visit letting me know that the only crisis is my garage door is open at night, well, I'd say things are pretty damn good. I'd like to think we, the board, had some role in helping with the tools to build what we have, but Patrick and Tom are the ones who did the legwork in helping make our community the safest and most customer-service-oriented in our nation, bar none. Perhaps their only sin is having a zero tolerance towards corruption in any form, but if one has to have a vice, that's a pretty good one to have. My job as a 7-7 pilot takes me away from home for long periods of time, and I get to see things all over the world. As such, I am grateful I live where I do and rest easy when I'm away, with my wife and son here, knowing that these guys are on the job. I tend to stay away from the soap opera of social media, but felt it important tonight to express my feelings and support towards two persons of great quality. I view Patrick and Tom as individuals of absolute integrity, and I'm grateful we have them working in public service in our town. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, J.J. I failed to point out, when we got ready to start that, that I wanted to make sure that people, when you came in and you complete a speaker's form, that you pick up a copy of the Town of Trophy Club meeting and rules of procedure. So if you didn't, you're welcome to go back and get one, and I would just encourage you to read that as to the way we will conduct not only our citizens' presentations, but our meeting later. Next one is a group of three, I believe, that are going to talk. Stephanie Fuller, James Jackson, and Jack Tucker, I believe. So if y'all would come forward, state your, at least one of you states your name and your address, and then you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fuller. I'm at 2604 Morgan Lane. Thank you for having us. I'm going to have Jack and James talk a little bit about our event.
Okay. Go ahead, James.
Okay. Guys, I'm James Jackson. I'm the owner of CrossFit Trophy Club. We're here to invite the City of Trophy Club, the council, to our second annual Stronger Than Cancer Fun Run 5K and/or CrossFit Workout benefiting Hudson Feldman and honoring other children that have been a victim of this deadly disease, cancer, on May the 11th.
So hi, my name's Jack. I'm the student council president over at Carroll Senior High School in Southlake. So I don't live in Trophy Club, but we're neighbors, and I think that's good enough. So what we're here to talk about, like James said, we're hosting this Stronger Than Cancer event. I'm sure you've seen plenty of 5Ks, plenty of CrossFit competitions, but this one is a little closer to home, especially for you guys here in Trophy Club. So the whole event is to benefit a kid named Hudson, and Hudson was diagnosed at the age of two with stage IV cancer on November 9, 2018. It's funny that it was November 9. That was actually the same day my mom, who has passed since, was also diagnosed with cancer. So this topic is very close to home for a lot of people, because cancer is affecting many people in our communities more than any of us would wish. But anyway, more about Hudson. So Stephen Bonifeldman's parents moved their family here to Trophy Club in June of 2016, just before welcoming Hudson and his twin sister Haley to their family that September. Hudson is one of four children in his family. He is a twin, but he also has older siblings, Hannah and Hunter, who are eight and are in the second grade at Beck Elementary School. Hudson is currently receiving several different types of chemotherapy at Cook Children's in Fort Worth, and will continue on and off for the next 50 weeks and have a feeding tube throughout. So this event that we're hosting, the Stronger Than Cancer event, all of the proceeds from this event are going to go to the Feldman family. That is our goal within the Carroll Student Council, is that we are able to fundraise and get enough sponsorships to cover any cost of the event, including the official racing systems program that we're working with, any vendors. We're going to have food on the day of, so any food items there, we're getting that all donated. That way, we can take every single cent that we raise and give it to this family, because they are in need of it with their current situation. And as the Trophy Club City Council, and as this being a member of your community, I think it would just, it would mean the world to have your support in this event and have your support on the day of, and that's why we are here inviting you today. It would be an honor to have you guys there, see what we're doing, see the work we're doing, and see this family, see how this is going to benefit them, and hopefully, it's the second year we've done this, hopefully, the third and fourth and fifth and sixth, et cetera, will carry on. And I'm going to hand it back through to James.
I just want to go over some details real quick. I know we've got a lot, you guys got a lot to do today. The 5K Fun Run will begin at Byron Nelson at 7:15 AM. The CrossFit competition at 9 AM. We're going to have, every participant's going to get a Team Hudson t-shirt and food by a local vendor, Meet You Anywhere, and we have other sponsors, but the point is, we need a lot of people to sign up. So that's the takeaway. You guys can go online, go to our website, social media, there's stuff on Facebook. We need as many people to sign up. There's different divisions. We have something for everybody, so don't be intimidated by anything.
Is the website CrossFit Trophy Club or?
There is a Facebook event. It's WOD, Team Hudson 5K and WOD, so it's on Facebook, and I believe Jill with the city is going to put that out through the city webpage.
All right, good.
Thank you.
I'm going to come and hand you guys these flyers for the event, just you can hold on. The QR code to register is actually at the bottom, so if you, you can get out your phone, go to the camera, and it will pick up that QR code for you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jack, I just want to say I'm so proud of you for being so involved in your community, being a student. I love seeing that, and good for you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. And then let's give them to you guys.
Thank you very much. Ross Eldred is next. Ross, are you here? State your name and your address, please, and then you have the floor.
Mayor Sanders, council. My name is Ross Eldred. I live at 2819 Merrittville Drive here in Trophy Club. I've been a citizen here since 2013, and I come before you today to engage and recommend the removal of Tom Klass, his town manager. For context, I worked for him at his last job. I cringe, I'm sorry.
Let me stop you just.
Yes, sir.
Did you read this document that was at the back?
I was not handed that. Oh, the 7C?
That I just referenced?
7C.
Go back and get a copy? You want to go back and get the number three and read it?
I can.
Before you talk?
I can.
Please do so to make sure that you abide by those rules.
I will, I will.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a copy? I'll look at it real quick.
Yes, sir. We're good.
All right.
Absolutely. I'll continue. As I was saying, I cringed when he was selected as town manager. I could speak for days and then provide example after example, how he's the antithesis of a manager or a leader, but due to our limited time, I'll describe in my words, while harsh but true, they are based on my personal observations of Tom, as well as discussions with those who have been affected by him both inside and outside Trophy Club.
Okay. If you're going to talk about Mr. Klass and be slanderous.
I am not being slanderous, sir.
Okay. You think so?
I'm certainly going to express what my observations are of this individual.
All right.
I observe that he only cares about himself, that he is narcissistic in many ways, and that he insulates himself by often intimidating and eliminating anyone who is not or does not become a yes man. He does not seem to listen to opposing or critiquing viewpoints, and he refuses to look objectively at any evidence contrary to his beliefs. He thrives off of conflict that I have witnessed, and often the chaos you see is manufactured. I've seen him generate false statements and documents that simply aren't true, in attempt to tear down those individuals who do not share his directives or simply ask questions. I cannot say that I share the point of view that our other citizens spoke earlier, that he has a high degree of integrity. I have not seen that. To him, I don't think it's about who's most qualified for jobs around him, but insulating himself with people that he can trust. I see him make decisions that I consider poor, and in the process, it builds a culture that's based on fear. To me, every decision he makes is all about him and not the people around him or the town in which he serves. I know many members were voting for a man that they knew nothing about, but on paper, he looked impressive, he presents well, and he says the right things, but that's simply not true. And I realize that there's been conflicts raised and leveled here in town council. As a citizen, I have kept up with those, but I must say that he only took this job, I do not believe that he took it for the right reasons. But instead, a position where people pay homage to him has his motivation. And the last thing Trophy Club needs is even to remotely look like the federal government, but that's exactly what it's becoming, and that concerns me as a citizen. I've seen him replace good people with people he knows will blindly follow him. And now my concerns are that his sights are set on this town council, and once he owns the town council, we no longer have a check or a balance. I hesitate to make assumptions about additional motivations he may have and what weapons he may use, but I implore you and warn you to make the right decision before he does more damage. If the community and current employees and former employees have issues with him now, I could only imagine if he is still around after this day. He will undeniably be out for a pound of flesh. I could bring a multitude of others through these doors that have experienced this man. However many fear for their livelihood is speaking out against a person like Tom, and I know that he will probably come after me, but I cannot wait idly in a place that I call home and be silent. He will have rebuttal and describe witnesses against him as disgruntled or the results of hard decisions are out to get him, and often play victim, but that's simply not true. He's the common thread that has caused a wake of destruction wherever he has gone, and he is vindictive beyond measure. He no longer lives here, so again, I question the motivation. If Trophy Club is so great and so close to heart, why did he leave? It will take significant time to repair Trophy Club government to a transparent and high-functioning culture, even after his departure. Culture is the most important foundation in any organization, a topic I have invested heavily in over the years of my professional life, and yet I observe someone who is the antithesis of a productive culture. But that repair can only begin with his removal. We can only hope that the damage isn't too great, and those that followed him will leave also or choose not to pursue his agenda. Trophy Club.
I'm going to ask you to try to wrap it up, please.
I am. I've got one sentence left. Trophy Club will not be better than when he found it. It will be far worse. I implore you to terminate before it's too late. Thank you.
All right. The next person is Danny Mayer. Mr. Mayor?
My name is Danny Mayer. I live at 2201 Prestwick Avenue. I'll begin by saying that the mayor and I disagree as to what is and is what is not a violation concerning a breach of confidentiality. I will only say that being the mayor does not make him right, but it does afford him the ability to submit a question to the Attorney General for an opinion, and I would ask that you submit that to the Attorney General for an opinion, the emails. Now to my statement to the council. Now, thank you for letting me speak tonight. On Thursday, March 28 of this year, the town manager sent an email to the council and to the town attorney, and in that email, Mr. Klass disclosed information which, in my opinion, was confidential. Since emails are subject to open records, therefore, it appears that he violated his ethical responsibility. In that email, he made accusatory and demeaning remarks and accusations against town council members who are here tonight. Again, on April 4, at 6:04 PM, he sent another email to the council and others. In that email, Mr. Klass again disseminated information that was confidential, in my opinion, and it appears that once again violated his ethical responsibility. Ironically, the second email is a request to be shielded, because apparently, in his zeal to sever the town's relationship with OTD, he surreptitiously was in contact with the Texas Rangers. Apparently, he did not notify members of the council of this interaction with the Texas Rangers, and when asked about it in executive session, he was forced to admit it. It is my understanding that the Texas Rangers looked at this and saw nothing, but if I'm wrong about that, feel free to correct me. Mr. Klass is now asking to be shielded and protected from the very people that employ him and supervise his activities and the very people which he has been attacking. He violates his ethical responsibilities, destroyed trust, and now attempts to hide behind the shield law. What is equally or maybe more troubling involves the town manager and the information coming to light now regarding the hostile and toxic work environment in Trophy Club, which apparently was created by the town manager. Trophy Club may be a great place to live, but apparently, it's not a great place to work. Former employees are now coming forward with shocking stories of forged documents, conspiracy, policy violations, and the list goes on regarding our town manager. I was disappointed that the mayor, in an attempt to protect the town manager, engaged a former employee on Facebook. The former employee made some observations of what happened when he was here, and the mayor responded, and I quote, "It is time for you to move on. Otherwise, it is just sour grapes, in my opinion," close quote. The mayor went on to allege that the former employee never contacted him regarding these allegations. The former employee listed three separate dates on which he sent emails to all the council members, including the mayor, concerning these allegations. I have submitted an ORR for those emails to determine whether the mayor was correcting, saying he was never notified. The current atmosphere in our town hall cannot continue. The atmosphere of distrust, which undeniably exists today between the town manager and the town council, must end. The responsibility of restoring falls directly on the shoulders of you, our elected officials. To ignore this would simply be a malfeasance of your office. I am going to make two suggestions to the council. The first is to immediately place the town manager on administrative paid leave. I'm not asking for him to be fired. I'm asking for you to get him out of here so you can find out what's going on. Appoint a temporary town manager. A temporary town manager should be a person that has not presently or in the past been a town employee or official. The actions of Mr. Klass show very clearly that he harbors a great deal of animus toward town certain elected officials. As a note, I invited that former employee, which the mayor accused of sour grapes, to attend tonight's meeting. He advised me that the town manager had warned him that if he ever set foot in town hall, he would have him arrested for trespassing. Because there are numerous allegations, which now must be.
Danny, I'm going to ask you to please finish up.
Okay, I've got just a little bit here, Mayor. Just.
Please finish up.
Because there are numerous allegations which now must be investigated, I am asking the council to have every current staff member, as well as all former staff members who work for Mr. Klass, to be interviewed by a third party to ascertain their opinion of the work environment at Trophy Club, if they are aware of any false documents, et cetera. The town must show some leadership. This situation and the actions of Mr. Klass are now in the public venue. It is no longer behind closed door in an executive session. As the town council, you have that responsibility. Should the council fail to have an outside independent agency to look into these alleged abuses, then you fail not just the town staff, but the town as a whole. If the town manager is innocent, he should welcome this investigation. Of course, this would be unnecessary if the town manager would simply resign. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Steve Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Flynn, 417 Ramsey Trail here in Trophy Club. So while I'm addressing the council, Mr. Lamont, Mr. Schaffner, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Jensen, Ms. Flurry, I really want to talk to everybody. Everybody that's watching this live, everybody that's in this room, everybody that's sitting here to my right and to my left. I don't know about you, but these last six, eight months have been disheartening. It's been disgraceful. It's been disappointing. It just keeps on going, the social media, the jumping on everybody. At what point in time is it going to stop? It's just not civil anymore. You know, I looked up civility, and if you look up civility, it says a formal politeness and courtesy in behavior and speech, or also polite remarks used in formal conversation. God knows we are far from that. You know, this meeting opened, we stood up, we put our hands in our heart, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, we listened to a prayer. That's civility, and we've lost that, all of us. We're all guilty of it. So what am I proposing? Maybe it's Nirvana, but I'd like the council to consider, I know you can't talk about it tonight, but somewhere in the future, maybe it's a week from now, maybe it's a month from now, I'd like the Town of Trophy Club to consider a Trophy Club Civility Day. Does that sound goofy? Does that sound stupid? Maybe. But can we not, for 24 hours as a community, stay off social media, stop the backstabbing? I think we can. Will it prove anything? Maybe, maybe not, but it'll prove to all of us in this room that we have the ability to be civil. We know how to do this. It'll show a message to our kids, our neighbors, and all of us. Counsel, the ball's in your court. Thank you.
Holly, did we have anybody else sign up?
No, Mayor, that's all that signed up.
All right. Seeing no one else seeking to speak at this time, we will move on to item one, which is our announcements. Receive town manager Klass's update regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding the same. Medal of Honor escort, extravaganza, and early voting. Tom?
Evening, Mayor and council. The 2019 Medal of Honor motorcade escort will be coming through Trophy Club tomorrow, April 10, as they make their way to the Medal of Honor host city, which is Gainesville, Texas this year, for a parade that will take place on April 13, which recognizes veterans from the World War II and Vietnam Wars. Members of our community are invited to line the bridges over State Highway 114 with American flags, signs, posters, as we honor these heroes while they pass through town. The motorcade will begin from DFW Airport approximately 5:00 PM, give or take a few minutes, and as you might guess, we're probably going to have some traffic issues involved, so we just ask everybody to be patient. Secondly, I'd just like to remind council that egg extravaganza will be held Saturday, April 20, between 9:00 AM and 10:00 AM at Independence East Park. Staff has ordered 15,000 eggs this year to be distributed, and that's 15,000, and the Easter egg hunt will begin at 9:00 AM. I'd like to also kindly recognize Barra Church, who has volunteered to help staff place the eggs this year, assist with crowd control, and also the Easter Bunny pictures. And then lastly, early voting for the upcoming May 4 general and special elections will begin April 22. It'll run through April 30. Early voting site for Denton County residents will be here at the Trophy Club Town Hall with the closest early voting site for Tarrant County at the Southlake Town Hall. Additional locations are also posted on our website. So with that, council, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions on the manager's report?
I just have a couple of things. I've been lucky enough to be on one of those bridges when the Medal of Honor goes through, and I highly encourage all of you to come and bring your kids. It really is a sight to see, not only to honor these heroes and our veterans, but also, I promise you will be overwhelmed with a feeling of patriotism. It really is something to see, so I encourage everyone to attend if you can. Early voting, get out there and vote. You know, we've heard tonight, a lot of complaining going on. You have really no right to complain unless you do your duty, and get out there and vote and get involved. Thank you, Mr. Klass.
Thank you.
All right. We will then move to our consent agenda. We will then move to our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Now, council, anyone wish to remove any items two through four from the consent agenda? See no one wishing to do so, I would then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda two through four.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Schaffner and a second by Flurry. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it does pass. Item number five, youth program standards of care. Conduct a public hearing regarding an ordinance renewing Section 1.08.001, Youth Program Standard of Care of Division One, Generally of Article 1.08, Parks and Recreation of Chapter One, General Provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances. It is now 7:31, and we are in a public hearing. Tony, you going to speak about this?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. The strategic link for this item is nature and beautification. Maintain town assets, services, and codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. The purpose of this item is to renew the Town Trophy Club 2019 Youth Program Standards of Care. The standards of care are intended to be minimum standards by which the town's Parks and Recreation Department will operate the summer adventure camp program. The only revision made to the ordinance, the ordinance 2019-11, was changing the recreation coordinated job title to Recreation Specialist. Staff recommends the approval of the ordinance as presented. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Holly, I don't see that anyone signed up for this. Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will close the public hearing at 7:32 and consider item five, 2019-158B. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the ordinance renewing Section 1.08.001, Youth Program Standard of Care of Division One, Generally of Article 1.08, Parks and Recreation of Chapter One, General Provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. That would be ordinance 2019-11.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-11, renewing youth program standards of care.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem Schaffner and a second by Councilmember Lamont. Any further discussion or citizens wishing to speak? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will then call the vote. All those in favor of approving item five B, show your hands. It is unanimous, it is approved. Item six, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the April 23rd council agenda and items from town council future agenda list. So I'll first call your attention to our next council meeting. And does anyone wish to have anything moved up or placed on that agenda at this time? That was on page 314 of your packet. I'm sorry. Yeah, that is right. Anybody? All right. Hearing no one, then I'll call your attention to our future agenda list, which is on page 316 and 317 of your packet. Anyone wish to add or remove items to this list? Seeing no one seeking to speak, we will then move on. So I'm going to read a statement before we get to the item that's listed as executive session. Prior to going into executive session, I'd like to make a statement. I just did that, didn't I? With the agreement of council, we can choose to conduct our discussions and take action on any section of the agenda under this executive session section, except where personnel matters, unless the employee being discussed likes to have that portion in open session. It is my recommendation that we conduct item seven A in open session. I see that I've got a request to speak from Alicia Flurry.
I move to consider item seven in open session, and a second who would like to speak to the motion.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Alicia, you said you would like to speak.
I would. I move to move this to open session for the sake of transparency and for productivity. I think we need to fully and openly and fairly discuss such a hot issue that is, at this point, negatively impacting our town. If you've been to our meetings and if you watched online, you can see that as far as productivity, we can barely maintain decorum here in open session, and we certainly can't maintain it behind those closed doors. I've had people text me from the lobby, not even from this room, while we're in there, saying, "We can hear the yelling." And it's really hard to get things done when we have council members so polarizing that we spend a lot of our time keeping them at bay. We have council members that want to resign or have resigned. We have a mayor that tries his best to maintain control, but with all the raised voices and insults and name-calling, he has a very hard time doing so. I'm not excluded from that. My voice may not have been as strong as it should have been. That stops tonight. I think that what's happening in the court of social media is very, very bad. I have refused this week to go swim in the sewers of social media because it has gotten out of control with conspiracy theories, conjecture, mistruths from people that don't even know all the facts. So if we discuss these things in open session, it's out there for everyone to hear and see, and I think that's just the best way to handle this. Anything not legally bound, you know, should be out here. We're reduced to having to start recording. I think tonight, we're going to start recording executive session because things are done and set in there, and then the next day, the narrative changes. Well, that stops today, I hope. So I hope that we vote to move this out into open session so we can all talk about it.
All right, I have a motion in a second to move item seven A to open session. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. And so item seven A is this pursuant to the following. Okay. It's, let's see, how do I abbreviate this? It would be to discuss deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business and the current matters with OTD regarding breadwinners and HG Supply Economic Development Agreements and possible amendments and are adopting new amendments. So this particular item will not allow us to take action, but if we finish our discussion and taking input from you, we then will move on to an item that allows us to take action if we choose to do so in public. So we're not allowed to make a motion until we get to that point. And so if you'd like to speak, fill out a speaker's form. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at this time? I don't see anyone, so I-
Luann.
I'm sorry.
Luann.
Oh, Luann, okay, I'm sorry. Let me read a statement, Luann, and then I'll let you come forward. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Our partnership between Old Town Development and the town began at least sometime in the 2014-2015 timeframe, when council approved a resolution that was 2014-17 on May of 2014. This later became what's referred to in our industry as a 380 agreement, and what that really means is its ability for a council to direct part of its sales tax dollars through an economic development corporation to support some kind of development. And we did so to try to promote the Trophy Wood Business District, which is the area out front here, which included breadwinners and other supposed developments in this area. The idea was to attract new business to the area. The initial agreement and subsequent agreements that are out there was to have Old Town Development, or referred to as OTD, bring to the town two high-quality restaurants. So that was the term used, high-quality. It gave us the ability to say yes or no about a restaurant. We could have maybe had a McDonald's, but council wanted something different and thought that we understood what our citizens wanted, and we wanted good restaurants, high-quality food in our town. And so that ultimately also included the establishment of a tax incremental reinvestment zone, a TIRZ. It means that when you're trying to develop an area, that by investing in that area, typically, there are buildings that get built and businesses, and more people come to the area, and so the property taxes generated since you establish that district can be used for economic development. So part of the agreement from the very beginning with OTD was to share in those incremental taxes to help continue the development. Over that period of time, there have been numerous changes made to the agreements and numerous issues dealing with what land is available and how do we deal with those issues. Those funds from a portion of our sales tax dollars and from the incremental property tax are governed by two separate boards, the Economic Development Corporation 4B and our TIRZ Board. And those two bodies pass a budget for the funds that they might distribute, and ultimately, those budgets are approved by the town council. And that's what we have been working on. So we entered in that agreement, and the idea was that we would bring restaurants to the area, and we would all benefit from that. The agreements that we have with OTD allow us to make monthly payments for a period of 20 years. So in essence, what we are doing is helping fund those two restaurants with sales tax dollars and incremental property tax from the zone that those restaurants will sit on. So in one sense, you could say the property taxes that the restaurants pay, part of that goes back into their success, is a way to look at it. So I realize that maybe not everybody understands what has been happening since 2014. It has been a long time. That was prior to being mayor, and there's been a number of people who have served on those boards, and some of those are here tonight and can speak to their own experience related to them. So at this time, let's see, I think I had one other thing. Part of what may be our discussions and what has happened has been the aspects of what I'm going to say were two poorly written agreements. That's my opinion. Obviously, they evolved over time, or the situations affecting that evolved over time, and had certain clauses that may or may not be pertinent or may or may not have been followed. So what council is trying to do is work through those conflicts to still have a successful outcome for our residents. And so to give you a little background on that, I've asked Town Manager Klass to update us on where we kind of got to this particular point. Mr. Klass?
Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try to do a short summary of what I understand will be, I believe will be helpful to council to put this in a proper perspective. In October 2017, I learned from staff that breadwinners had been advertised for sale, and I actually spoke to Mayor Sanders about that. Over the next few months, staff responded to multiple inquiries from OTD principals regarding specific terms of the agreement with the term "in the event of a sale." I brought this to the attention of council, and as a result, an action was taken to ensure OTD would continue to receive incentive payments regardless of their future interests in the restaurant. Now, I'd like to be really clear with this next point. The action taken to revise the developers' agreement was well within council's purview and authority, and they took such action. A little over two weeks ago, on March 24th, I received an email from Mayor Protem Schaffner, who said that he had been caught off guard with learning breadwinners had in fact been sold, and he did not recall ever having been told so. This was important because for the implications for future incentive payments, and Mayor Protem Schaffner asked to speak to me about it. Having never been told of the sale myself, I asked our Administrative and Financial Services Director to reach out to Chris Gordon to confirm the sale of breadwinners. And additional staff members, I asked to conduct a comprehensive search of all town records to determine whether the town, the EDC, or the TIRZ Board had ever been notified of that sale. Chris Gordon later confirmed that the restaurant was in fact sold, and our search identified no records whatsoever indicating the town, EDC, or the TIRZ Board had ever been notified. Our search also revealed two additional issues of concern, which I brought to council's attention. Number one, the first issue, Section 4.1D of the agreement specifically mandated OTD's notification of the town, EDC, and the TIRZ Board in the event of a sale, and because there was no notification, and based upon the legal opinion of our town attorney, the agreement was in breach, and the town no longer obligated to pay the remaining over $700,000 in incentives. Number two, an email between a current council member and an OTD principal was inadvertently discovered in a computer search, which gave rise to a potential conflict of interest. Again, I want to be perfectly clear, all of my communications with council, many of which have become a public record and the basis of a very public lynching on social media, were discussed with our town attorney, who opined they are not privileged communications under the Open Records Act. Additionally, it is the opinion of our town attorney that in every instance, I acted within the scope of my authority as town manager and have fulfilled all my duties and responsibilities. I'm happy to take questions.
All right, Mr. Jensen, you have to speak.
Yes, sir, I'd like to talk about, I'd like to start with the conflict of interest issue. When did you discover that conflict of interest? And dates to me are very important.
I can't give you specific dates, but, Mr. Jensen, you're well aware that we've been discussing that conflict of interest issue for months.
Could you at least say you discovered it before our last council meeting of March 26th?
Absolutely, because I was going to bring it to your attention on March 26th.
Between the two council meetings, so we could probably say between the 12th and the 26th.
Now, I can tell you specifically when I discovered it. If the council meeting was on the 26th, I discovered it either the morning of the 26th or maybe the evening of the 25th, following Mayor Protem Schaffner's request for me to look at records.
Okay, so either 25th, 26th, that's perfect. And this conflict of interest was a new conflict of interest, correct? We knew about the trampoline park conflict, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is all brand-new. Who else knew that you found this conflict?
Several people. I talked to staff about this because I had pulled staff together at about, I think, 9:00 the morning after Mayor Protem Schaffner's request that we conduct this search. I also pulled staff together at 3:00 that same afternoon to see where we were with the search, and I believe it was sometime between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. that I learned of it. There were, I think, seven staff members in the meeting, I believe.
Would you say that, did you give staff authority to tell anybody else outside of staff? Or is that something that really needed to be kept within staff until you advised council?
I never gave anybody the authority.
Right. I would assume your staff would know, hey, I need to keep this tight vest and tight lip until Tom tells council, right?
I make no assumptions, and you shouldn't either.
Okay. Town attorney, if somebody discovers a conflict of interest, wouldn't it be, in your opinion, that council needs to be told before it's released to the public?
Yeah, we had it on the executive session. I found out about it March 26th. That's when I was in the office, and we had it on the executive session agenda item.
Right. So I'd like to bring you to a post that was on Facebook, timestamp March 24 at 5:35 p.m. That'd be prior to you stating you found it, but who knows? Maybe you'd already found it, I don't know. In the comment, a gentleman named Brian Allen Brennan posts the following. Kurt says he has more of a conflict than just a boat, and he knows what I'm talking about, so does Chris Gordon.
And you're implying what?
I'm implying that he's talking about this conflict of interest.
There's multiple conflict of interests. Mr. Jensen, you're well aware of that. He could have been talking about several conflict of interests that every one of us has discussed for months.
We're here to talk about it, sir. Let's get it all-
We're doing it.
So what other conflicts of interest exist?
Eric, point of order. Our agenda item is dealing with-
The OTD contract. If he said conflict of interest- The OTD contract, and he said conflict of interest was a reason for canceling the payments. I am authorized to ask questions as it relates to conflict of interest.
So, Mr. Jensen, you interrupted me and didn't let me finish. I called a point of order, you did not. So let me finish, and then I'll come back to you. I don't believe that examining the conflict deals with the agreement at hand. That's my opinion. Now, I'll go back to you.
Thanks, sir. So that's my first prompt. Kind of weird that he would make that statement on March 24th, Sunday, and then we have our council meeting on Tuesday. Yeah, I mean, look, he's an officer, maybe he found it on his own, who knows? Back to the conflict of interest issue. So you found a conflict of interest based on an email, right? Did you do any, so I apologize, my question's kind of for David Dodd now as the town attorney. As the guardian of Town and Trophy Club, it's your responsibility now investigate this conflict. So was an investigation done in regards to that email as far as reaching out to Mr. Kurtz?
Yes. We talked to Mr. Kurtz that night in the break. You had a work session at 6:00.
Correct.
Regular session at 7:00. We showed it to Mr. Kurtz that day. The email's very self-explanatory. He says his wife was invested in Turnberry Capital, which was invested in the HG Supply project.
Right. So did you proceed any well...
Which he needed to answer some of the other things. I had previously done an investigation per request of council. That's where we discovered the trampoline businesses that Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Gordon are involved in. And had asked broad questions about any relationships, any business dealings with Mr. Gordon or Mr. Springfield, Mr. Kurtz or his family, and this was never answered then.
Understood.
So this is a follow-up to that.
So you, did you investigate as far as when he had money in the Turnberry cap and when money was taken out of the Turnberry cap? Did you get those dates at all?
He told us it was, he put $100,000.
Do you have anything in writing?
No, he mentioned to us when we asked him that it was his wife investing for his son, and he had nothing to do with Turnberry. Then I showed him a Secretary of State document I had, which showed him as the incorporator and that the...
Do you have anything in writing?
For Mr. Kurtz?
Yeah.
No, I do not. But you're asking me if I investigated, so I'm trying to say what we did. It was a very short conversation with Mr. Kurtz.
Sure.
Between the work session and the council session, I offered him copies of the documents we had. I don't know that he took them that night or not.
Do you know if Mr. Kurtz has an attorney representing him?
Yes.
Have you reached out to the attorney to get any background?
We had a meeting the other day. To be honest with you, Mr. Jensen, Councilman Jensen, as town attorney, I'm looking for conflicts of interest and how they affect votes and things like that.
Sure.
We already had one established with the trampoline park.
Right.
Business relationship. This was another one there. I don't have jurisdiction to look any farther if there's any complaints or any criminal charge or any other thing else like that. My investigation stopped when Mr. Kurtz is no longer available to participate in OTD discussions.
Okay. Did we have any votes on record during the time of Kurtz's investment in Turnberry Cap?
There were quite a few votes.
Can you name the dates, please?
I believe they were around, there was June of 18, can I look at them?
We amended the contract in a joint session on January 13, 2018. Does that sound familiar? The original expiration was January 22, 2018.
I only know what Councilman Kurtz told us that he had $100,000 in. I didn't, I didn't...
I know, but let's...
...amend him about the dates.
It's real important.
I'm happy to...
Councilman Jensen, I didn't look farther into the other votes.
Okay. So Ms. Holly can pull it up, I assume, pretty quick. January 2018, we had a joint session at that time. And so you would probably state if Councilman Kurtz voted on that, that was probably the issue, right? Was the voting on the OTD extension?
That is one issue. There's other issues.
Okay.
Under local government...
I can clarify the dates of the votes if that would be helpful to the conversation.
January 13?
No, no, sir.
January 18, 2018?
Yeah, I'm speaking of, there's three votes that were pertinent to the whole conflict issue.
But that was the, the agreement expired January 22, 2018, and on January 18, 2018, we made a vote in a joint meeting with EDC and TIRZ to extend it to November 22, 2018, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Did Councilmember Kurtz vote on that contract?
I don't believe he did. No, he wasn't present.
Was Councilman Kurtz in the audience on that meeting?
I don't remember.
It says it in the minutes. Ms. Holly can state for the fact, for the record.
I show him as being absent.
Thank you. So tell me another, tell me another time then where he could have placed a vote during his time of ownership in the LSC.
I haven't established his time of ownership.
Councilmember Jensen, I can clear up the three votes that are in question if you would like me to do that. There was a vote on June 12, and that was a vote that...
June 12 of...
2018.
Okay.
And that amended the contract, which is, I think, why we're here tonight.
So Ms. Holly could pull that one up as well.
Okay. And then there was another vote on July 24th, and that was where Councilmember Kurtz, I believe it was a 7-0 vote with council, agreed to the 400 and I believe $13,000 parking lot that we have next door.
That was an EDC-only vote, wasn't it? Because that's EDC's property.
No, sir. It was a council vote. Holly will be able to verify that through records.
Who's paying for that parking lot? I thought EDC is paying.
Town paid for that parking lot.
Okay. So you're saying July 24...
July 24th was the 413,000.
When did Councilman, when was Councilman Kurtz out of Turnberry Cap? Do you know that date?
No, he, oh, well, yeah, actually, we do on Turnberry Cap. David, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he said that that was January of 18, some point.
He said he was out of January 18. Secretary of State documents showed that he was changed January of 2019.
Yeah, it's a year different.
Secretary of State documents...
Right. Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask if there's anybody here representing Mr. Kurtz to present a document in regards to when he was out of Turnberry Cap?
I don't mind if it's cleared up.
Is anybody here representing Mr. Kurtz?
I represent him.
You need to come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Do you, so do you have, oh, sorry, let you state your name and address.
My name's Ashkon Mariari. I live at 737 Cannon John Lane in Dallas.
Do you have documentation proving the time of the Kurtz family's investment in Turnberry Cap?
I do not have any documents with me responsive to that.
Do you have something you could give verbal and then provide documents later on as needed basis?
Yes, I can, I can kind of clarify what happened here.
Okay.
What happened here is that Councilman Kurtz is, he had interest in Turnberry Capital. There was an oral agreement, just an agreement in place that he, they were going to divest him of his shares. Obviously, this goes through accountants and attorneys, and they just forgot about it. It wasn't there. The agreement was in place back to January. He was getting divested of his shares back to the original price that he paid for him. So his kid, and it's not even his, it's his kid's trust that benefits from this. So he would be divested of his shares back to the original price to avoid any conflicts. He didn't recognize that that wasn't completed at this time, and after this vote, and before it was even brought up by Mr. Class or anything like that, that obviously happened this, this year, he made sure that that was completed, and it was backdated to the original date that they had agreed upon.
Which would have been in 2017?
I believe that was January 2018.
January 20, 2018, sometime January 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
It was very early 2018.
So at least at that point, he's no longer invested in the Turnberry Cap, and the votes that Mr. Class brings up in June 12th and July 24th, he would not have had any investment in those properties at that time?
No, as a matter of fact, he only has a liability. In other words, when he sold back the $100,000, $100,000 worth of shares, he didn't get $100,000 back. It was if the investment pans out and whoever's buying the shares gets up to $100,000, they pay him back that $100,000 and nothing more. So if the investment doesn't pan out, he only stands to lose.
Okay. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have some other questions. Let's talk about the breach. We state that notification was not given in the event of a sale. I think there's one thing we need, we need to clarify, really...
Do you want to know about the third vote, though?
Yeah, yeah. So I had the June 12th, July 24th, and...
Fourth vote, or I'm sorry, the third vote was January 8 of 2019, and that was a 5-2 vote. Councilmembers Lamont and Fleury dissenting for the $283,000 contract to McElroy's and Falls for the engineering design.
Now, that had nothing to do with OTD, sir. We did not have any written agreement with OTD at that time, and you know that during the day of the council retreat, shortly thereafter, email came in that they pulled their response, the RFP. So at that time...
Council retreat was two weeks later than the vote.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is, you sent us an email stating we had no written agreement with OTD, and I know I have that email from you. We had no written agreement with OTD for Phase 3. You stated that in the email.
The whole purpose of the garage was for Phase 3 OTD project.
We have an email, I'll get the email to present during this session, Mayor, that you stated we had no written agreement with OTD, therefore there was no notification needed from them, even though they sent us one. I remember it's something to that effect.
The written agreement was the RFP that they filed a year earlier.
Understood.
Can I make one clarifying?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute. You're asking me if you can talk?
Who's asking?
Is that what the deal is? Yes, you are asking me. I know you're not asking.
No, I'm asking you. Can I make one clarifying question? I just have a question. Did we spend any money?
Put your microphone down, please.
I'm sorry. Did we spend any money? Did we go ahead with that contract?
No, we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Eric, you ready?
I will get to the contract issues later. Let me find this little email from Mr. Class, I'll let you know.
All right. Greg, you want the floor?
We keep going over dates and specific times. The reality is that on March 15, 2018, Councilman Kurtz said he would recuse himself from any, gotta put my glasses on, from any business that he merged with a partnership, including operations and realty business. Now, unless he's saying that's not OTD, he did not recuse himself from the June 12, 2018 meeting, which was the critical meeting because we changed the contract. And he was very vocal in the executive session about that. That's one. Secondly, I still question the contract that was signed by OTD when they no longer owned the property. How do you sign a contract as owners of a property when you sold it two weeks before? I think it's a very critical question, but Councilman Kurtz failed to recuse himself when he said he would. Forget all the dates, doesn't matter.
You finished?
I've got the email in front of me now, sir.
All right, put yourself back in the queue. I'm going to Alicia first.
This will be fast, Eric. Probably for Ashkon, hi, Ashkon, to answer. I know we talked about the intention to divest and about Mrs. Kurtz's investment. Who, just so we can get a picture, who created Turnberry Capital? Who owns it? Who are the managing partners? And how, in this timeline that we're talking about, who?
I do not represent him or Turnberry Capital or any of those things, so I can't answer those questions. I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't know the answer to those questions as well.
Is anyone that we're talking about, any council members, Mayor, Tom, David?
Things like that are very confidential.
Okay. Well, we're talking about his wife and the child's investment fund being invested, so, and Secretary, you said you had a Secretary of State document?
The Secretary of State has public documents of when it was formed in August of 2016, and Mr. Kurtz and another member, another gentleman in town were directors, and the address was here in Trophy Club.
So I guess my question is...
That's on Turnberry Capital. I have no information on investments or amounts or who invested. That's not public.
But someone said earlier that Turnberry Capital invested in OTD or...
That was in the email between Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Gordon, where he, Mr. Kurtz indicated Mr. Gordon that his wife was invested in Turnberry Capital, which was investing in HG Supply.
And then to what you said, the intent to divest was before that took place, but someone forgot to do it, so it wasn't done? Is that what you said?
Yes, and I'm not sure if it was so much as forgot, as it was just on the queue and didn't get done by the attorneys and accountants, and it just wasn't a...
For a year?
I, I was, that was not my firm. That's not my, so I can't, I can't answer to that.
I have a lot of dates written down. It looked like a January in one year that was the intent, but it didn't happen until January of the 19th. And I'm asking these questions to get to the truth, so all parties can be heard. I'm not looking to hurt anyone or to be on one side or the other, but I think if the facts come out and truths come out, it helps everyone make a better decision, no matter, you know, what your personal opinions or friendships are, and that's why I'm asking these questions. So David, I guess this might be a question for you. If the intent was to divest before the investment, thank you, Ashon, but if he wasn't removed from being the managing partner or director, how does that affect conflict? If he's not the one that invested?
Being a managing partner and director are different than investment.
Okay, good.
It's two different things, you'd think. On a day of a vote or a day of a council action, you look at the status at that time.
Okay. And we're saying that unfortunately, they were in the queue, and he wasn't removed at that time for those days?
That's what they're saying. I've not made any representations on the dates of the investment or when he owned it.
Thank you.
Eric? So on Sunday, January 20th, which would have been the day after our retreat, Mayor Sanders sent an email to Mr. Class, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Schaffner. He states, "Everyone, do we have any written agreement on OTD involvement in Phase 3? I think I know we had an RFP process where we rejected all responses once and reissued the RFP. Did we award RFP to OTD? Did OTD sign anything related to the RFP on Phase 3?" We got a response on Monday, January 28th, from Mr. Class, and it was sent to Mayor and Council. Mayor, there is no written agreement with OTD, nor has OTD signed anything related to the Phase 3 RFP. You are correct. There was an RFP process with two submittals. One was which rejected with, which prompted the EDC and council to begin discussions with OTD again. No contract or development-related documents have been executed to date with OTD for Phase 3. So that answers my question that the parking deal was a Phase 3-related, there was no written agreement with OTD, therefore there can't be a conflict if there's no written agreement with OTD. There was no verbal agreement with OTD. There had been discussions of potential uses within exec session with OTD, and that was it. Thank you, sir.
Greg?
Okay, getting back to June 12th, executive meeting. I had brought up, I had heard that the loan was paid off. And I said, well, if the loan's paid off, we're out of the deal because the agreement continues until the lender is paid off. And I was assured that the loan was not paid off by several council members, saying that the OTD had just switched lenders, and it was not paid off. So again, I go back to this very important question of how did they, how were they authorized to sign an agreement that they no longer owned the property? And I would ask, Mr. Jensen, you'd stated that we all knew they sold the land. I never got a response back as to who. I know I did not know that, and I'm not trying to put words in anybody else's mouth, but maybe you want to speak to that. I know Philip asked for it that Sunday. He'd said he didn't know about it. But we were voting on something that we did not know the land was sold, except for several council members, according to Councilman Jensen, to be saying, we all knew they sold the land. So possibly council members, EDC might have known, but the majority of council did not know. That's a very critical question, as is how they were authorized to sign a document that they no longer owned the land. It'd be like if you sold your house and you went into the bank a couple of weeks later and put a mortgage out on it, how should it have known?
You finished? Alicia?
To address what you just said, along with several other people involved here, I didn't know either, and Justin, I think you actually called me to ask, hey, what was your recollection? I said I, I was under the impression there was a change in lender, and we were talking scenarios, if there was a sale, if, if this would happen in regards to the HG extension. So, I even was very honest with you, I did not know either. I did not know of the sale. So, if Councilmember Jensen's saying we all knew, that does not include me.
Eric?
All right, let's get this out of the way. It's irrelevant whether we knew or not, and here's why.
Please, touch enlightenment.
Further contracts, 4.1D, four, I'm sorry, 4.1D, yes, sir, all right. It states discretionary sale by OTD. Discretionary means they can do it whenever they want. Here's what the contract says. "The town and/or EDC shall have the right of first refusal to purchase the property." I'm gonna stop right there, everybody. The word "property" is defined on the very first page of the contract. So this is the breadwinner's contract, I'm gonna read to you what the property is. "Whereas, developer is the owner of an approximate 2.0517 acre tract of land, generally located in the Trophy Wood Plaza project, comprised of tract two, lot 2R-2, and zoned as a part of Plan Development PD 25." It states again in the definitions, Article Two, "Property shall mean 2.0517 acres." Do we all understand 2.0, 2.0517 acres is the land that Breadwinners is on? I think everybody can agree, we know what we're talking about. The HG gives a different definition of property. It's a one-acre piece of property on the other side. It specifically states it in the agreement. To agreements, property is defined, so let's stick with the Breadwinners property, okay? Go back to discretionary sale. Understand, when any time I say "property," we're talking Breadwinners property only, okay? Not everything, just Breadwinners, because property's been defined as the 2.0517 acres. So, EDC, the town and the EDC shall have the right of first refusal to purchase the property if developer desires to sell the property with or without public improvements or property improvements at any time during the first, the right of first refusal term defined below. So let's find out where it's defining the right of first refusal term. And it states it right here. "The right of the town and/or EDC under this section shall remain in effect until such time as two separate restaurants on the property." Did y'all catch that? What's property? Just where Breadwinners is, right? The contract's wrong. We're not doing two separate restaurants. We're doing one restaurant on that property. It goes on to say, "Have each received a certificate of occupancy, and developer complies with all of its obligations under Section 3.2, Section blah, 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 at which time the town's and EDC's right of first refusal shall terminate and be of no further force and effect." Guys, they got their CO. We have no right of first refusal. The contract was written wrong. I'll give you another instance here within the contract where it was misstated. I've provided all this information to the town attorney over the last week or so. In Article Four, both contracts, Article Four, Section 4.1A, has the following statement. "Further, if developer fails to obtain two certificates of occupancy for each of the two separate restaurant sites." We're all good at math. What does two for each of the two equate to? Four. Two for each of the two is four restaurants. That's not what we're doing. The contract was worded wrong, and guess what? I never read it. I didn't. I am now, and I'm gonna read every contract they bring to me now on to make sure they're done right. The contract's bad, and we need to accept it that it should say, "One CO for each of the two separate restaurants." Get it corrected. They did not have to tell us whether it's sold or not, and that's, to me, that's not the issue at all. Thank you, sir.
Recognize myself, I did not know it was sold. That's the only reason I put myself in the queue. All right, Philip?
All right. Unlike the mayor, I was here from the very, very beginning. I've voted on everything that OTD has brought to us. I've voted on every agreement, I've voted on every term sheet, I've voted on every developers' agreement. This dates back to April of, or, it dates back actually to 2014. Early 2013 is when the town and OTD started talking. If you go back, if I take myself back to those early days, Trophy Club was desperate for restaurants, for retail, for anything. The reason that you have PD 30 with apartments springing up, with all of the different things, is because Trophy Club was desperate. They were desperate for anything that they possibly could get. Anything that would bring additional revenue to the town to lessen the pressure of property tax, which everybody knows property tax is, is the, certainly the catalyst of where we get our revenue. And so we were trying to go beyond just property tax, take that off the burden of the resident, and get more retail. And so, I go back to those days when Mike Sly and Stephen Sidell worked hard with OTD to bring high-quality restaurants. So, the first night that I ever knew anything about OTD, we, it was about 1:30 in the afternoon, and I wrote the town manager, and I said, "Are you, are you going to send us anything? Any kind of document, anything that we can read?" Because I was a stickler back in those days to get things to us before we sit here in this, in this seat. So about 1:30, 2 o'clock, the town attorney at the time, Patricia Adams, sends over a term sheet. And then about 30 minutes later, maybe an hour, the town manager sends, sent us a project overview, a staff report. In the staff report, it says, "Old Town Development approached the town in April of 2013 regarding the potential opportunity to develop high-quality restaurants within the town. Over the course of the past year, the town has worked with OTD to develop a performance incentive agreement that would develop three to four restaurants on approximately 5.4 acre tract, generally located between the Baylor Medical Center and Trophy Wood Drive. This property is within the geographic boundaries of TERS 1 and is eligible for TERS incentives. The performance incentive being offered is approximately 3.2 million. The town anticipates that the appraised value and gross sales for the development to reach 12.8 million within five years of signing a developers, a development agreement, which equates to approximately 250,000 per year. There are three components to the incentive agreement predicted on performance measures attained by certain dates by OTD. Those terms are outlined by the attached term sheet." So, that night, we approved that, not only us, but TERS, EDC, we all approved it. Unanimous vote, each, each board approved the term sheet. So then, you fast forward to September 2nd, 2014. Now's when we start getting updates, economic development update, email after email. On Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, payment doesn't begin until developers' agreement is executed by all parties. This is Stephen Sidell writing me. "Thus, the 23,000 will not happen this fiscal year. OTD is beyond frustrated with the property owner. OTD submitted the LOI on July 31st and can't get a response, phone call, et cetera, from the property owner. The LOI met the seller's terms regarding price and acreage. Communication from the seller has been difficult and often non-existent from the very beginning. I even called the property owner for status updates, and while he usually takes my calls, he doesn't provide any kind of information related to the property. It is frustrating from all angles, Stephen." So just remember this. First of all, remember that the town approached OTD. We approached them, we wanted these high-quality restaurants. OTD started to work, they hit roadblock after roadblock after roadblock in trying to get the land. Which is, which goes to Eric's point, that the land we're talking about in the original term sheet was where the blacktop is. It wasn't where Breadwinners and HG sits today, it was the blacktop. That's where the three or four restaurants and things of that nature gets confused in this document that, that the town, town attorney drew up, not David, Patricia Adams at the time. So then we go to January 30th, 2015, and it's talking, this is from Stephen Sidell. "Good morning, council. I was talking to Chris Gordon with OTD yesterday regarding the developers' agreement and setting up bank payments. The executed term sheets states that the EDC makes all payments to the lender, not to OTD. Staff is currently working on a draft developers' agreement, but the term sheet states that we will make no payment until the property closes and there is an executed developers' agreement. OTD closed on the property last Thursday, and it could be a march at the earliest until a developers' agreement is ready to go forward for approval for all three boards. The developers' agreement is really more formal term sheet and will carry all requirements from the executed term sheet. Since we are not paying OTD directly, we pay the lender, and if OTD doesn't fulfill their obligations, we own the property, does council have any issue with me proceeding to make payments? The payment each month is 11,731,08. I will ask, I will also have to ask the EDC if they have an issue, since they are technically paying the paying agent. I've not contacted the EDC yet regarding this issue since talking to Chris Gordon yesterday afternoon." So there's Stephen Sidell, the town manager, willing to make payments, because, again, we are pushing OTD to get this, this done. We're pushing them to bring these high-quality restaurants. Here's April 2nd, 2015, Economic Development Update. It says, "Good afternoon, EDC directors. I'd originally thought we would need an EDC meeting next week." This is again from Stephen Sidell. "But there are a couple of items that have not come to fruition yet regarding restaurants. And as you can also imagine, I have been swamped, and I don't want to hold a meeting for the sake of holding a meeting. However, I do want to update you on several economic development activities occurring in town, OTD. They have had a very serious meeting with one of the restaurants that focuses primarily on the breakfast and lunch crowd. The meeting was great, and they feel fairly confident regarding the outcome. In fact, the restaurant group may consider bringing another concept. We should hopefully know something fairly soon about whether the, an LOI might get signed. I know they are working hard to pull together their development." Then we go to November 5th, 2015, and this is, "Good morning, council and directors." Again, from Stephen Sidell. "Thought I would give you a quick update on a couple items. OTD continues to push forward with Elias Pope and his concept. We are hopeful that a lease could be signed by mid-December, but Elias is going to be on a mission trip, which is slowing down the process a little. Things are looking positive, but you just never know. One of the biggest concerns is Murdaugh, and this is a very important statement. One of the biggest concerns is Murdaugh and his Entrada Development or another city swooping in last second to steal the deal. However, I think that if we can get the lease signed, that there is going to be considerable interest in our newly acquired property based on some initial conversations with folks. OTD and I have been working on some information to further strengthen our position with Elias, and will meet with Catalyst Commercial today to see if there's anything that they can help us generate off this initial research I've done in-house." I read all those to say this. When I got on council, or, I'm sorry, when I first met OTD, and this was brought to council, we asked OTD, almost begged OTD, "Bring us high-quality restaurants." Like Nick says, "We could have had this, we could have had that." But we, we begged, "Bring us high-quality restaurants. You do this, and we will pay you this," as the incentive agreement. If I take myself back to that night in 2014, early 2014, I would have never dreamed, first of all, that we would get Breadwinners. Second of all, I would never have dreamed that HG would be that big. So, what we asked of them, and, and you can see in the documents, the excitement. You can go to our budgets and see, we talk about OTD, we talk about high-quality restaurants. What we asked them to do, they did, and they far exceeded our expectations, far exceeded our expectations. I agree with Mayor Sanders. The document sucks, for lack of a better word. It's a horrible document. It was not written properly. I agree with Eric. Were mistakes made, and we should have read the document? Yeah. But the intent, the intent has been met. The intent of OTD to do what they told us to do, what they said they were going to do, far exceeded my wildest dreams. I mean, that night, I thought, "These guys are crazy. This will never come to Trophy Club, and never come to Trophy Wood. Why would anybody want to put a restaurant on Trophy Wood Drive? And if you go out that door right now, you'll see Breadwinners fully operational, you'll see HG lights on, ready to go." And so, we can debate all night whether there was conflicts, whether they voted, who voted. But if you go back and look at the record, I went back and looked today, vote after vote after vote after vote after vote after vote, unanimous, 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 unanimous. And this was not just a council decision. We had EDC board, we had TERS board, and all of those votes, unanimous, unanimous, unanimous. So I would implore this council to forget about the conflicts, forget about what's happened in the past. We need to just tear up the document and start fresh, and we need to fulfill the obligation that we promised OTD. I mean, you can, you can see it over and over and over. There was never any talk of, "If OTD sells, then we can get out of the agreement." Nobody ever said that. What we said is, "You do this, and we will give you this." And so I think that we should just start fresh, let good lawyers, good lawyers, work on a good document, and bring it back to us, and we approve it and move on, and fulfill our obligation. Thanks.
Greg?
Well, as far as first right refusal, we can argue that point, whether it's properly filled out or not. As far as two restaurants, I have to look at Jared King over there, and he claimed that were two restaurants. Breadwinners and Quarter Bar. I can appreciate the history, I was there. You got, you convolute a little bit with Breadwinners and H&amp;G. Breadwinners is up and going. I would like to read, since we've been reading stuff, 4.1A, and it says, "EDC shall continue making land repayments in the amount of $5,926.48 for a total payment by EDC not to exceed $71,117.76 annually to the developers' lender pursuant to the developers' agreement for a period of seven years, ending January 22nd, 2025, or upon the date that the developers' debt is paid in full. They sold the land, they paid the loan off, the debt was paid in full. We no longer have an obligation under this agreement to pay that debt, even putting aside that they signed the agreement when they did not own the land. I cannot stress that important enough." And as far as intent, you know, "I intended to pay my electric bill, and I forgot, and they shut it off. I can't tell, you know, I intended to pay it." This is a contract that we went into, and we have, we have an obligation to uphold it on behalf of the residents of Trophy Club."
Alicia?
I don't think anyone is disputing, Philip, that Chris and Justin brought some amazing concepts and restaurants to Trophy Club. And we are all grateful for that, and we're so excited for HG to open. I mean, anybody can, you're saying, "Read this, read that." You can see my videos, I've done this last week, because they so graciously supported our, our school auction there. So no one's disputing that. What we're trying to figure out, when we, and we're all in agreement, the contracts were poorly written, they're bad. Because I think they were just kind of thrown together, maybe even at the dice, I don't know, Philip, you were here. And I think that our town manager was trying to take pause. You've got allegations of conflict, more than one. You've got allegations of recent contract, you have all these things going around. And I think the intent was to take pause, and let's figure this out, and not rush into the next council meeting and whip together another agreement that's gonna be just as bad. together another agreement that's going to be just as bad, and that our next council is going to have to go through all of this drama, and I say drama because this has been ridiculously dramatic on all sides. So, we're not disputing that. We're not disputing that the properties are great, as, as Philip was saying, but I have to disagree with you, Philip, that we can't just forget about conflicts, we can't just forget about bad agreements, we can't forget about a possible breach. Am I saying that the intent wasn't there? No, I, I'm just saying that we can't just forget about it, we do need to fix it, and we, and we have to talk about it and get to the bottom of it. We can't just wipe things under, throw things under the rug. What's going on in Dallas and Richardson? Is that where we want to be? No. And that's the whole reason for doing this in open session, so I can appreciate all the history and the explanation, and we do agree they're bad agreements, but we can't rush into throwing together a new agreement that's just going to cause same problems in the future.
All right, so I put myself in the queue. I move to direct town manager and attorney and staff to, number one, continue payments with OTD, and a side note, which is not in the motion, incidentally, no payments are behind, inside note. Number two, direct our attorney and manager to work to create an agreement documenting payments remaining on the Breadwinners property, and that the agreement include releases for both parties of all conflicts that may exist in the current agreement. And number three, work with OTD and attorneys to modify the existing agreement for the HG property once the CO is obtained by HG. If I receive a second, I would like to talk to it. Okay? So I made the motion, and it is seconded. I'm trying to move us to the real point of, I think, where we are. We can sit here for hours and discuss a lot of things that, for the most part, probably will not affect where I want to vote and what I want to do. I want to move us forward in a positive faction. I don't want any more finger pointing, I don't want any more slanderous activity, I don't want any more post on Facebook accusing other people. It is time, as our good friend said, it's time for us to look for the positive and behave as adults and move positively. Sure, there are mistakes made, absolutely. I'd be the first one to point out a lot of those, and that's been part of the frustrating nature of this. I do not want to try to rewrite a second developers agreement on the property where HG sits. It's so bad already, why would I want to start documenting some things that are really irrelevant? The fulfillment of bringing two restaurants is happening, a CO will happen on HG unless a tornado comes and we start over. Heaven forbid that that happens.
That would be our luck, don't we?
I didn't say that, forgive me, I didn't mean that. But we need to move forward. The issue tonight is what we wanted to allow you to do, and there haven't been a lot of questions, is, are there parts of what the council, EDC, and TERs that have done with investments to bring two restaurants to town? Do you have issues with that? Do you have questions about that? Because that's really where we are. If we've misled you, if we have not been good stewards of your money, then we need to hear it. I, for one, think that we've invested wisely. Do I wish that we didn't have to pay so much to get them here? But I remember when we couldn't get anybody to come here. It is not the best location for people to find a restaurant. And quite frankly, if you go to Roanoke and Oak Street, it's not the best location because parking was terrible for so long. And you know it's better now, they have a parking garage, and they've done some things to solve that. We need to move forward. The good people of OTD leveraged themselves, got banknotes to buy land and build a building and attract restaurants. The fact that they found someone to actually buy the Breadwinners property and building that had originally a 10-year lease, and I assume the lease went to the owner, but that's not my business to necessarily know that, it's a good revenue generator, I suspect, for the person that bought that, and if I'm a businessman and I'm looking to expand my business, I'm going to take those opportunities to maybe get my cash out of one deal and go to the next deal, and move on. So, the motion is before you, it's a motion of move forward, it's a motion of make payments like we have been making, but come up with an agreement for the Breadwinners property that is specific to the fact that we are paying OTD compound LLC, compound one or two, or whatever it is, LLC, to the remainder of our 20-year note, the way that happens, or whatever there is left. Let's document that, and from a legal standpoint, let's dot our i's and cross our t's, and end any other conflict that was in the past. Notification or no notification, different piece of property, wording that was bad that said two restaurants? Okay. Surely you can draft some kind of statement that we all can agree to, releases both parties of liabilities and risk. So, that's what I'm trying to accomplish here. The second part of that was the HG property. For the same reasons, once a CO happens, anything in the contract that says first right or refusal doesn't mean anything to me, because quite frankly, if you're going to sell that, I don't have the money to buy it, and the town is not supposed to own revenue generating businesses. So that's not going to happen, again, it goes back to the agreements. It should have had a clause that said, "Once a CO, that issue goes away." So, I'm saying, you know, it's surely in 60 days that we can come to some kind of agreement. Now, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, that the agreement on HG, the developers agreement on HG, has a 60-day notice clause. Is that right? Nope?
I'd like to, I'd like to correct that. The developers agreement, you're correct, has a 60-day, but-
That's what I said.
My correction is this, we have a subordinate agreement signed with Frost Bank, the amount of which is, I would assume, is confidential, but we know what that amount is. That agreement states a 180-day notice must be given. It also states, it is signed by Mayor Sanders, it is signed by Town Attorney Dot. I have seen the signatures. It states that any other agreement is junior in agreement to the subordinate agreement that the town has signed with Frost Bank. That's because the bank wants their money, and we are the-
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt you. I, I appreciate you adding clarification, but I was speaking.
Yes, sir.
And you could have got the, you are the next person to have the floor, if you could have just held those, I know you're excited, but just hold those a little bit.
Just like giving facts.
I know. You just like interrupted me, is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, oh, you admitted it. That's on tape. Okay. Where the heck was I? Anyway, and, and I realize that that subordinate agreement is there, and it calls for a longer notice. And, quite frankly, we think we know who that lender is and who that contact person is, but don't see that it's our job to potentially affect a relationship with a banker and their person they lent money to. That's not for, I think, me to initiate or the town to initiate, that's a job for the person that owes them money to do so, even though that's a three-party agreement. And we would have a right to call that banker, but that's not the way I do business, it could be a joint meeting, but let's solve it appropriately. They have that agreement, as Eric said, to protect themselves, recognizing that the town is paying money for that development, and could be that that construction loan is dependent upon needing our cash. I don't know that, but I can surely develop that. So that's the reason I made all the motion. We have a motion by myself, a second by Jensen. Questions are relative to this motion, either from council or citizens, and if citizens want to speak, I think I have two speakers, is that right, Holly?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to let council ask questions, if they have anything, or make comments, and we'll listen to these citizens that have questions or comments, and if nobody else has questions or comments, we will then proceed to the vote. All right, so-
I would like to amend the motion.
All right, so, one second. Before I recognize you, I have two speakers.
It could go to the motion amendment.
So, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to call on these two people to see if they will relieve their place to speak on the motion, so that I can recognize Schaffner for an amendment. So if you say you'll release your place, then I'll take it off, and then you can put it back on, and if Schaffner puts yours on, put your request on. It's your software.
It's my app, I'm going to turn it off.
Put it on, so I can do it. So Alicia has released. Greg, would you release your time?
I listened to his amendment.
All right, so Greg, I'm going to take you off, put yourself back on if you want it. All right. Philip, you're recognized for an amendment.
You touched on this, but I want to make it crystal clear, and I would like to make an amendment to have this language or similar language agreed to by both parties that says, "All entities and individuals who are party to this agreement and any subordinate agreements certified that all past or current conflicts of interest have been disclosed to all other parties in accordance with state law and documented within the agreement. Further, all entities and individuals who are party to this agreement shall disclose any past, current, or future conflicts of interest to all other parties upon receiving knowledge of such in accordance with state law."
All right, we have a motion and a second. So we'll discuss, the amendment, we'll discuss the amendment. So, does anybody need that reread, or is it clear to you? And I think I heard you say, Philip, that this statement or something similar-
Or similar language agreed to by both parties.
Because Philip is not the attorney.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I just, the, the reason for this is to make it crystal clear to our community, to our citizens, to all stakeholders, that every conflict of interest that you've been hearing about, that you've been hearing discussed, that it's in this agreement and it's disclosed. That's the intent of that language.
All right, Alicia, you have the floor.
I'm going to let Greg go first.
All right, Greg.
So when you say conflicts, past, present, if someone does come into a conflict, they have to immediately report it?
Exactly the way the motion reads.
Now, if you have-
I'll help answer that. He says, "In accordance with state law."
Right.
And so, yes, you have to disclose it. If you don't disclose it within seven days, and I don't know whether that's business or entire calendar days, then you are in, you have committed a misdemeanor.
So we, we are bounding all council members, whether they're here or not, and future council members, correct?
If they have a conflict of interest with this agreement, with the parties in this agreement.
Yeah, I think my interpretation would be that, Greg.
I just want to make sure-
That a new person coming on the council needs to look at it.
Someone, I didn't vote on that, I'm not a fan of that, I just want to make sure.
You through, Greg?
Yep.
Alicia.
Does this include appointed officials as well as elected officials? Philip?
Good question.
Well, if state law requires-
All entities and individuals-
Well, we spoke to council-
Says entities in the agreement.
Clear for everyone else.
Yeah, who are party to this agreement.
I guess that's a clarification.
Well, EDC would be-
I mean, I-
No, no.
I'll go down with you later on, but the way it's worded right now, it says, if, if you're- Entities and individuals who are party to this agreement, so TERs and EDC.
Correct. Council, TERs, and EDC. Park Board?
Clarify for everyone. And this has no bearing on the previous conflict issue, this is totally separate-
Correct.
From that. Okay, thank you. That's what this time is for, to clarify and ask questions.
Okay, I have no council seeking the floor, I'll come back to you, I have citizens' presentations. No, I mean, I have people who've asked a question.
And, excuse me, when do we get to go back to the original comments from your original motion?
Yeah. I hadn't voted on the amendment, and I think some of these comments may be on the amendment. So until I clear that.
Gotcha.
So, I'll call your name, and if you're not talking about the amendment and you want to talk about the main motion, then just let me know. First person is Luann Oldham. Luann?
Luann Oldham, 2535 Roseville. I had a presentation ready, and it should be up. Here we go. Okay. All the information I, as a private citizen, have in this presentation was taken from public records, so what I'm saying is, any of us could get this information. There's been no leaks, there's been no cloak and dagger. My information comes from our website, where I read the minutes for the last three years, open records requests, and the Tarrant County Real Property Records online. This, as you've been discussing for hours, actually does boil down to the economic development agreement, the public-private partnership. The parties to the agreement to review are the town of Trophy Club, the tax increment reinvestment zone, called TERs, Trophy Club Economic Development Corp., and OTD, the developer. The term sheet we've talked about, you can see I have the same dates, I've reviewed the documents, I've reviewed the contracts. We began with the term sheet in March 2014. It became effective January 22nd, 15. The term requirements, I'm not going to get into all the terms, but I am going to give you the highlights. OTD was to purchase the property for a defined amount, $1,064,278.25. Requirements of OTD was to produce two executed leases, restaurant leases, minimum terms 10 years. 24 months would have been 1/2217 from the effective date of the term sheet. Also required two certificate of occupancies for two restaurants within 36 months. At that time would have been 1/2218. EDC pays the developers lender, we've talked about that already, I've heard your discussion, a total amount of the purchase price, non-inclusive of interest. TERs pays the developer up to $1 million total incremental revenue for public improvements. If the developer fails an obligation at the 24, the 36 months, EDC or town may elect to purchase properties. That election option ran 120 days after each 24, 36-month term. The term sheet became the economic development agreement. It was signed in 2016, term to expire in January 2035. Multiple amendments, the drafting, in my humble opinion, as a real estate specialist, was horrible. It was horrible. But multiple amendments approved by council. The latest timeout is the certificate of occupancy now has been pushed to a total of 50 months from the effective date. Here's where I don't like what I'm reading in the records. The requirement to secure two restaurant leases with a minimum of 10-year terms was evidenced to the town by cut and paste marked-up one-page excerpts of what typically runs lengthy lease agreements, 40, 50, 60 pages in commercial transactions. Complete terms of leases were not provided, questioning in my mind the validity of an unconditional 10-year term. This is the lease agreement evidenced to the town. As you can see, the copy and paste is the first paragraph of a multi-page lease agreement is shown here, which names the parties. And somebody typed in to- And somebody typed into this copy, executed 5/24/15. There is no executed date on this. This was just typed in. Lease term, item E. Somewhere within the body of the document, it says 180-month period. But down here it says, "subject to the provisions of paragraph 3 below." We have no idea what paragraph 3 below says. These were not reviewed leases. The landlord signed it, the tenant signed it, there's no date. Now, this was acquired through an open records request. If there are full leases, I apologize, but I would ask why they were not released on open records request. The next one, same copy and paste, they did a better job, but we have the same thing. The lease is this time dated in the first paragraph. We have the same referral back to paragraph 3, which we don't know what the definition is. And then it says down here where someone typed in, "fully executed lease notarized signatures." The next page had no notarized signatures. Why this matters? I'm seeing a pattern of under-disclosure. Conditions of the 10-year terms, which were pivotable. This had 10 years minimum term. The Town should have satisfied themselves that that was unequivocal. Numerous extensions to the EDA were approved by council members with strong business ties to the beneficiary of the action. This is not conjecture, it has been discussed openly with dates, names. These business ties were not disclosed prior to the votes. More evidence of omissions. We've talked about, records fail to reflect notice in the Town of the sale transfer of breadwinners. The deed was recorded June of 18. The EDA was amended after the sale of the tract, diverting the lender reimbursement to the developer directly. Now, this was the action that was taken on 6/12. At that time, the signature to the EDA as the owner-developer on the breadwinner's tract was an error. They were not the owner. So therefore, I ask attorneys, if they're not the owners, what standing do they have to enter into the agreement? Why this matters? TERS funding continues. Here's our $1 million. Here's how we're going to pay it. Here's one of the many multiple amendments to the Economic Development Agreements. This one was in November of 2018. Signed by our Town, signed by the chairs of the TERS, signed by the same party who was president of EDC. Observations. This is not conjecture, this is my professional and my personal opinion. A pattern of amendments have been pushed to benefit the developer. Strategic appointments to influential committees, recommended by a subcommittee composed of council members closely aligned to the developers. If you would like more information on that, I take you to the minutes of the Town Council meeting 6/27/17. Financial investment and business tie disclosure questions have been answered by abrupt resignations of council members and ethics committees members. Dates of some of those resignations are shown. We've all talked about the social media, we're all disgusted. The possible misapplication of our Town's tax dollars have been hidden from officials. Now we're willing to forgive it because our intent was to get two high-quality restaurants. Heated discussions, as Alicia had said earlier, they've been heard outside of the room. Town manager was contacted and questioned by an outside investor. How does that fact dishonor manager class? The current consequences of an unbalanced DDA should have been apparent to citizens. I'm a citizen. I discovered it, and I didn't discover it on Facebook. Committees have been reconstituted, and financial alliances have been deepened between a select few members of the community. All appear to flow out of the developer relationship. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne. I had a couple of comments about that presentation is the reason I put my name in the queue.
Neither leave it up to Susan.
So I think this is a question for David and maybe some council members if they saw this. The copy of the lease agreements that were provided to Luanne in open records became apparent to us that those surely are not full copies, the way they look to us. So didn't we have some email exchanges about that that said, "Is there something better? Can we get something better?"
Yes, I brought that attention, to the attention of the attorney, and we never received any better copies.
So you brought it to David's attention?
No.
Oh.
OTD's attorney.
Okay. All right, and so, obviously, everyone's aware of that at this point. Maybe should be solved, just for historical purposes would be an appropriate way to deal with that. The second thing where you said diverting money, what I remember during that time was, I wasn't told the building and land was sold. I was told that the bank was requiring OTD to pay off a note in order to get their construction loan. Now, that is from memory, I'm not looking at an email or something about that. So I just want to at least document why I voted to support that, was I felt like that, and I understand business aspect, that if my banker's telling me, "You've got too much debt, and I got too high risk, reduce your risk to me, and I'll give you that loan," that I'm going to figure out how to do that kind of thing. So I appreciate you pointing that out, appreciate your research, Luanne. You've always done a great job of that, and I appreciate that. So now, I'm going to try to hold us to the amendment, because I don't think we voted on the amendment. Did we?
Correct.
Okay. So the amendment is specific dealing with a clause to add, if I'm correct. So let's try to see if anybody wants to speak about the amendment to include this, I shouldn't say clause, sentences probably, to a future agreement, right? And I know you don't have a copy of that, but, so, Alicia, do you want to speak to this amendment?
No, I was going to speak to your comments about Luanne's presentation and your original motion, so I will yield until the amendment.
Okay, whoever was there next went away. Okay, you went away, so Alicia came back. Okay, so I'm going to try to deal with the vote unless somebody has a question for us. Now, Susan, was your question on the amendment?
No, sir.
All right. So-
Yeah, he's got the-
I got the other names, I just haven't gotten there yet. So Mayor Protem, your job is to remind me to get back to Susan, okay? All right, so maybe. All right, so I have three, no, wait a minute. I think you added those, the four people you sent me last included the first two?
Ms. Regal is the next to speak.
Okay. So Ms. Regal, do you want to talk to the amendment or the main motion?
The main motion.
All right. And Greg Wilson, amendment or main motion?
Main motion.
All right, very good. Does anybody want to talk about the amendment? No? All right, I'm going to, so Alicia, amendment? No?
Nope.
Greg? I mean Eric?
No.
Okay. I'm going to call the vote. All is in favor of the amendment? Show your hands. It is unanimous, it is amended. All right, now, we're back to the motion as amended. So I'm going to go to Alicia and Eric, after which I'm going to go down my list of speakers. All right. Alicia?
Okay. We talked about intent, and people make mistakes, and things like that. And so, I would ask that if we're going to be asking for grace and mercy, we extend that to our Town Manager, who, in my eyes, was doing his job in the midst of potential conflicts, potential breaches, whatever you want to call it. And just as a fellow human being, not as, even as a colleague or a council member, I can't condone the vilification of someone that was trying to do their job, who, in my eyes, has exhibited utmost integrity. And I've talked, I haven't talked to any of the disgruntled employees making these claims on social media, but I do talk to you and you, and most of the current employees, who are very happy working here, very happy working with Mr. Class. And I think their only trepidation sometimes is when they're in front of council and how they're treated and spoken to. So when we're talking about, Mary said, you know, "Look, we know what the intent was, we want to move on." I'm going to ask, we extend that same courtesy to Mr. Class, and like you said, we don't want to slander, libel, throw blame, defame. I'm going to ask, we extend that same courtesy to our Town Manager and our Town staff as well. And that speaks to what you were saying earlier in your comments. And as far as, now, your comments to Luanne's presentation, is that for now or for another time?
Go ahead.
What is the implication, she, this has been brought up by a couple of times. What is the implication of OTD signing these amendments and these agreements as owners when the property was sold? How does that affect the agreements and the-
David?
That's one issue that would be addressed if we're going forward with the breach. I can advise that, if attorney client approved, I'd rather do it executive side.
Okay.
If you're asking questions like that.
Okay, I would just, okay.
And I may not, we may not get to it, I guess, depending on how the motion goes.
And Mayor, you had also mentioned, to your recollection, when we were talking about this, the amendment, it was to my recollection, too, that we were talking about a change of lender, not a change of ownership. So that's what I remembered as well. That's it, thank you.
All right, Eric, you're next.
There was some comment made about, that we reached out to OTD about the executed lease, and whether or not a complete copy was made. We did receive a response back, and Mayor and council were copied on that on Thursday, April 4. So I just want to clarify, they did respond to that.
And did we get a copy, or was it just, we'll get you-
You'd have to read what the email says, but they did respond.
They responded with the same copy that appeared to be altered.
Okay, so the same copy that Luanne had of a document?
What the attorney says is, "The developer agreements in place do not specifically require a production of the leases, therefore, an informal response was made, which was intended in the spirit of the goodwill that is, that this retained throughout this process." So just letting you know, they did respond.
So that's OTD's attorney?
Yeah.
When you say attorneys. Okay, thank you, Eric. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, Greg?
I gather this motion is for both agreements?
Well, there were two parts of that motion. Number three dealt with the second agreement. The third part of my deal, work with OTD attorneys to modify HG agreement once CO is received.
I get that, but is, are we dealing with breadwinners in this motion, or that's a separate?
We are dealing with, yes, my motion, including item 1 and 2, did in fact deal with the breadwinners portion of the agreement, and that's what it was directed towards. That agreement, for all practical purposes, is gone. It's of no value in the sense, the CO is received, payments have been changed. And so the idea was, let's document what we owe on that particular agreement, come to the terms of who we pay, when, and I'm sure attorneys want some language that deals with release of everything else that maybe was a conflict. So that's what I thought I made in a motion, which was just the breadwinners agreement, because I don't think the breadwinners agreement does anything anymore. And is gone, for all practical purposes. Land is sold, so let's move on.
But we're paying payments.
We are paying.
So I'd like to make an amendment to separate the two agreements. For voting.
All right, so Greg moves to separate the motion. And just for clarity, that would be to deal with items 1 and 2 in my motion separately from item 3. Here's my motion, just to clarify. One, continue payments on breadwinner land. And then I said sideline, no payments have been missed. Number two, direct attorney and manager to work to create agreement documenting payments remaining, and include all releases for both parties of all conflicts that may exist in the current agreement. So you're wanting to take those two pieces, which talk about breadwinners agreement, separate them from my instructions about the HG agreement?
Correct.
All right, do I have a second? I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
No.
Oh, radio? Okay. All right, do I have a second? No council second, it does for lack of a second, Greg. One moment, let me read what Holly. Thank you. Who gave us that note? Thank you, Dennis.
Well, now we all want to-
Where was Mayor Protem?
Sleeping in the wheel.
Oh, we forget.
Okay. All right. Somebody's a stickler for detail here, so let me find my agenda. The comment was, "Isn't the vote on motion supposed to occur in Agenda Item Number 8?" Which is what I said, because we are discussing 7A, which doesn't allow us to take action. All right, so I stand corrected by Dennis Sheridan. And so I guess what that means is, we did vote on an amendment on a motion that wasn't valid. So-
We were just practicing.
Okay. So what I would like, I think, to get out of here, I have two speakers. Well, Greg, I think you finished, right?
Yes.
All right. Eric, you still have something?
One last important note.
Okay, good.
It's a responsibility to the citizens of Trophy Club. We have to look at the entire picture. There is a risk that we will undertake, partake in, if we stop payments. The risk is to the bank that we signed the subordinate agreement with. As a real estate attorney, you will, or, no, sorry, not attorney, as a realist, in real estate, Ms. Luanne, you'll know this. We have contracts that we sign, the subordinate agreements with the bank. We would put ourselves at great risk if we stopped making payments to those. That's all my own comment.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. So because I had people who signed up to speak, and I have made them wait, I'm going to let them speak, even though we maybe don't have a valid motion, recognizing that I have failed in my parliamentary procedures. It's on tape. I'm sure I'll get reminded of that. Susan, would you like to speak at this time, or do you want to wait till we're taking action? You're welcome to speak.
I'll wait till you take action, Mayor.
Okay. So that gets us to Ms. Regal. Do you want to speak now?
Yes, please.
Please identify yourself and the company you're with or represent, and your address, please.
Yes, hi, Kristen Regal. I'm actually a citizen of Dallas, 7007 Royal Lane, Dallas, Texas. I'm here representing OTD in its various entity forms. I am a commercial litigator. I have been practicing 21 years in this great state, in state court and federal court. This is what I have devoted my life to doing, and I'm proud to be here with these gentlemen today. And I also really appreciate the opportunity that I was able to meet with some of you last week in a meeting here, and also forward you my letter recently, that I promised Mr. Dodd I would put together a list for you and for him, and I sent that. I did not receive a response, but I assume that everyone was able to at least understand my point of view. In portion, I'm here today to answer questions, if I can be helpful. We have discussed at length the historical perspective of the developer agreements. So I'll try to be brief, but I think it is important to discuss a little bit more of the history, and why we ended up with the agreement that we ended up with, or the two agreements that we ended up with. So as we've stated, in 2014, we had a term sheet, we were all very excited about it. 2015, whoever put together that initial agreement, it included the entire tract of land, which is approximately 3.8 acres, and it was to encompass what eventually became both breadwinners and the HG- both breadwinners and the HG supply projects. At some point, some intelligent person said, hey, there are different entities here. One entity owns the HG supply, another entity completely owns breadwinners. There are different terms, there are different payments, there are different requirements, et cetera, so we need two different agreements. I wish that I had been involved at that point in drafting those agreements, but I was not. So we ended up with a variety of amendments, right? And those amendments were voted on by this council and possibly previous council people, but they were voted on each and every time in an effort to continue the business relationship that eventually has benefited this town and benefited everybody involved, okay? The idea here is that towns like Trophy Club offer incentives not just for developers. They could have taken their developments anywhere and they have plenty of them, but to benefit your town and to use some of those tax dollars to increase revenue in the future, right? That's the whole idea. The idea is not if they need to sell that property, you know, TXU is turning off the lights because some perceived but incorrect technicality. That was never the intent. And really, regardless of what some of the previous documents said, I quote them and I talk about them because it's important for people in this community to understand how we got to this place, but trust me, in a court of law, those documents aren't coming in. They just are not. There are merger clauses in the very last agreements. We're never looking at a previous agreement in a court of law. And I, since I'm mentioning court, I want to say this, too. Councilman Jensen just mentioned that there's a risk, right? There's a risk because of the subordination agreement with the bank, and that's huge. But there's another risk. You know, there's the risk of litigation. And I think the town should, I don't say that as a threat, I say that as a realist because although I'm a litigator and I love being in court and I try these kind of cases, I tell my clients litigation is no fun. You know, I'm a counselor, too, and if we can resolve something, that's always the best way to go.
Okay, I'm going to pause you just a moment.
Yeah.
I'm going to move you on.
Yes.
Please do not discuss risk of litigation or anything else about it. That's my instructions to you.
Okay.
If someone wants to talk to you about that, they can talk to you later. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough.
We're here and I have a motion on the floor somehow.
Somewhere.
Try to stay with the advice of that. I'm just trying to move you forward. You, I understand your statement that you're saying you're not trying to threaten, but you bring up the topic. And I'm just encouraging you to pass by that or you're going to get me upset. Is that fair enough? Thank you very much.
Absolutely. I feel like calling you your honor, but I won't.
Please do.
Let me touch on another point. What we call in my world, we call them the rofer, the roper provision, which is the right of first refusal. And I want to talk to you from a contract lawyer's perspective because that's what I am. And I look at this and it's really pretty simple. I think Mr. Jensen did a very good job, but I want to reiterate from a legal perspective, the term of the rofer or the right of first refusal that the city would have had expired long before OTD sold breadwinners. So there was no longer any right of first refusal and therefore, there was no need to provide any written notification. That's just the way the contract reads and that's the way I believe a court would interpret that. And not in litigation, but just legally. I have to tell you what the law is, what I believe it to be.
Well, you don't have to tell us what the law is.
No.
You do not represent us.
True.
Okay. Thank you very much. You may advise your clients. Please stay on point for me.
So to address another point that was brought up about, from the lady who was an expert in real estate, about the document that was an email sent by OTD to, I believe it was Mr. Glickman was his name, but he was on the council, I'm assuming, or associated. Anyway, it was copied to the council, I believe. And what was happening is someone had reached out to OTD and this was back in 2016 in December and said, what's the status of the leases? What's the status? Where are we on this project? And so my clients put together a quick response in an email and what they did is, you're probably familiar with commercial leases, but they're hundreds of pages. They can be hundreds of pages and they can contain a lot of confidential information. And so my clients cut and pasted the signature from their tenants to just indicate, hey, guys, we got the leases. That's not to say that we don't have the original documents. We do. And if anybody feels like there, you know, isn't a lease at breadwinners, I mean, it's up and running. And in fact, they were not 10-year leases, they were 15-year leases. So we do have those documents and if we didn't produce them, it's because the contract is so poorly worded that it wasn't required. There's nothing in those agreements to say that any leases needed to be produced. Not to say that my clients wouldn't redact certain confidential information and be happy to produce them. So I wanted to address that. I made some other notes. I think, I guess, one other thing that I, in summation, I would say that I don't think this is about forgetting anything. I think there is a valid contract. And my clients, the valid contract that was amended allows the payment of the responsibilities and the obligations of the town and the tis, tis, T-I, ters and the EDC to continue regardless of whether or not my client has paid off that loan. And there are clear reasons for that, as you said. We don't know why a loan was paid off. It may be because they need to move into a different business opportunity, whatever. It doesn't matter. The contract, as it reads, allows that and it was signed and it's a valid contract. So we have a contract that allows the payment to move forward. It was amended. And if you ask Mr. Lamont, you ask, why did they sign a contract when there had already been a sale? It's because they continued to own the incentives underneath that contract. That would be my argument, that they continued to own that. They were always going to be allowed to sell that in some future date, whether their loan had been paid to the develop, directly to their lender or not. Their right to sell was subject to the provisions of the lease and the CO, which they obtained. So, but they continued to have the ownership of the incentives, which is the repayment of everything they put themselves on the line with in the first place. So that would, I hope that answers that question a little bit. Do you have any questions for me?
Not at this time. Counsel to you. Thank you, Ms. Regal.
Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, that's what I'm going to redo. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to move us to item eight and we will return after that so that we can deal with the motion. So item eight, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Well, we really didn't go into executive session, but we took action to say we're going to discuss this openly, even though the agenda item was in executive session. And so I move to direct town manager and attorney and staff to, number one, continue payments on breadwinner land. And number two, direct attorney and manager to work to create an agreement documenting payments remaining and release both parties of all conflicts that may exist in the current agreement. And number three, work with OTD attorney or attorneys to modify HG agreement once CO is received. So that was the motion. It was, as amended, that included this information to say that any agreement, in any agreement we do, all entities and individuals who are party to this agreement and any subordinate agreements certify that all past and current conflicts of interest have been disclosed to all other parties in accordance with state law and documented within the agreement. Further, all entities and individuals who are party to this agreement shall disclose any past, current, or future conflicts of interest to all other parties upon receiving knowledge of such in accordance with law. And I believe Mr. Schaffner said, or something like that. So my first payment is, I'm not sure that's needed in the agreement to continue payments, but okay. That's, your attorneys can figure that out. So that's the motion that I have made and I would appreciate a second.
Second.
And Eric, I think did it, okay? So I read, besides my original motion, I included the amendment that Philip was making. So it's one motion with everything in it. Are we clear? All right. So we have that before us. Susan, if you'd like to speak, you may do so.
So I want to thank Luanne for her presentation and making me look really bad because I scribbled notes during the conversation. First, Susan Etsrom, 269 Oakell Drive. I want to thank council for the openness of tonight's meeting. I think it was after all of the muck and mire on Facebook this weekend, it was more than needed. A couple of things that I wrote down during the discussion was, number one, you can't prove intent. I'd like to say we probably could, but I don't think anybody can prove what the intent was. You shouldn't forgive conflict if it exists. If conflict existed, it is not okay to say, we forgive you and we're going to move on. If payments were made that shouldn't have been made, you have, as does Tom Klass, and which is why he took the actions that he did, the fiduciary responsibility to get the towns' funds back. And I expect you, as people that I voted into office, to be good stewards of those funds. I expect no less and hope that this moves forward in a more positive manner. And I appreciate your attention and protection of us from loss speaker. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else was, oh, yes, I have one more person. I'm sorry that I almost forgot them. They've been in this list so long. Greg Wilson, who was on EDC when we did this.
Yes. Gregory Wilson, 2013, Churchill Downs. During the time when much of this transpired, I was on EDC. I was actually the president during a lot of it. I served with Councilman Jensen at the time, Sean Bone and others. We worked closely with Chris and Justin on this and there was a lot of excitement around the deal. I think everyone is very passionate about this topic and the things that transpired. To kind of clarify something, when this first started, there wasn't one restaurant. It started out as three and then it went down to two and then ultimately, apparently, it ended up being one. There are a lot of changes made to the agreement and I think a lot of that happened because of the close relationship that was with OTD where maybe the paperwork wasn't as solid as it should have been. You know, we saw that with the mud. Not making this a conversation about the mud, but when you have these close working relationships, things don't get documented as they should and things, and the after that everyone thought they understood at one time becomes unclear when new people get involved. I think everyone has uniformly said that the agreement was poorly written and it leaves a lot to be desired and there are a lot of things that are not clear and ambiguous about it. To that end, to have people publicly demonize Tom Klass, I think is a travesty. You know, I don't know all the ins and outs of all the things that transpire. I don't claim to. It's probably not important that I do, but to me, staff should never be the target of the things that have happened. It's a shame, we're all better than that. I know many of you and I know that's who you, that's not who you are. So show who you really are and treat people the way you would want to be treated if you were simply trying to do your job. And so I would just ask everyone to be civil as we go forward and, you know, you guys often have to make a decision how you want to handle the ongoing relationship with OTD. I hope it can be resolved in an amniful fashion, but let's not demonize a person for just trying to do the job to the best of their ability. My experience working with Tom Klass has been a great experience. We've had, we've had great interaction and I think it's a shame for people oftentimes who have had no relationship with them to make remarks about them based on things that no one knows because I don't think many people knew all the things that transpired prior to this meeting. So to Steve Flynn, I would like to say the same thing he said. Let's be civil toward one another because this is our community. We all live here and let's not forget that's the bigger goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Greg. Thank you very much. All right. So we have a main motion that included an amendment, but it wasn't an amendment, but it included those words. And at this time, I'm going to be calling the vote unless somebody else wants to speak for or against that motion. This is your chance. Please don't leave and post things negatively on Facebook without saying them here. I wasn't talking to you, Greg, but you put your name. Does anybody in the audience want to sign up to speak? All right. Greg, you have a comment?
I just want to address the attorney. I understand that there might be other things in the agreement that we could have worked out and come to a reasonable agreement, but we didn't. I can't speak for anybody else, but I feel I was misled in the June 12, 2018 meeting. I asked certain questions and as we reflect back, I was given wrong answers. And to that end, I think that this agreement is null and void and we should get our money back. And so I'm going to vote no.
All right. So I don't see anybody wishing to try to speak.
I'm going to ask a question in relation to the-
Oh, Alicia, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. I just clicked on there and-
Where's the bell that's supposed to ring when you do?
Sorry, Eric, I have a question.
Alicia.
So when we speak to the motion of directing staff to come to new agreements, I'm assuming that includes negotiating new agreements. I'm sure, is that correct?
I didn't limit it in my motion so it could-
So to Greg's point, I don't think we're just going to say, here you go, have everything, everything's fine. We're going to just put all this away without discussing it. I think during negotiations, we talk about what intent was, what wasn't met, what transpired, what we need to do to move forward. Is my interpretation of a negotiate, it's going to be a negotiation when we're redoing these contracts and agreements? Is that what your motion speaks to?
My motion didn't do anything about negotiations. It merely said, develop an agreement. So I'm sure-
Well, developing, David, does developing an agreement include negotiating an agreement?
Whatever's developed, I anticipate, still comes back to council for final.
Yes, it does.
That's the instruction I-
And typically, if we were going to try to negotiate, we wouldn't do that in open session because that would then let the people that were negotiating hear our rationale for doing what we're doing. So typically, that would be in closed session and that's the reason the law allows for that. If you're negotiating a contract, you can in fact have it in closed session.
But both parties are negotiating.
Yeah.
OTD is going to be at the table, the town's going to be at the table. It's not just going to be a unilateral agreement. So, okay, thank you for clarifying. Are you okay?
All right. We're going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please show your hands. Alicia, Eric, Nick, Philip, all opposed, same sign. Lamont is opposed. I'm getting ready to take a recess before we go anywhere else. I don't know about what anybody else needs. My intent, just to let everybody know, is that we have finished item 7A. Is that right with counsel? Are you okay that 7A is gone? All right. And so it is 9:30. If I can- if I can call us to order, please. We are going to go into executive session and go into this side room, so you're welcome to stay here in a minute. But I just need you to be quiet so we can go into executive session. It is 10:02 PM. We will convene into executive session in a minute. And during that executive session, the meeting will be recorded. Pursuant to the following designated sections of Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Consultation with attorney over the matter of OTD, if we wish to do so. And B, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, which includes property where HG and PD 30 exist, which will be information provided to us by the town manager. The parcel of land between this building and breadwinners, and a potential transfer of property between the mud and the town. Item C, 551074, personnel matters to discuss deliberated appointment. Appointment, employment, evaluation, assessment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Section 551071. Under Section 2, consultation with attorney to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of Texas, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, of the State Department of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Item 1, consultation with attorney Simon Whiting with Buford and Rayburn. And item 2, discussions with town manager Thomas Class. We are in executive session. It is 11:36, and we will reconvene into regular session after our executive session. Item number 8, we'll return to that, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. And the chair would recognize Councilmember Lamont for a motion.
Make a motion to engage for employment matters, the law firm of Buford and Ryburn LLP.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It is 11:37. We are adjourned.